I want to welcome everybody to the June 2019 regular council meeting. Today is Monday, June 17th, 2019. Appreciate you guys coming. Usually our meeting's on Tuesday, but due to our summer schedule, we decided today. Have it on Monday, the 17th. Called for 6:30 PM, it's 6:40 PM. Meeting officially called to order. Counselor, if you could call, roll call please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Here.
If everyone could please rise. Chief, can you please pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America?
Sure. Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I want to welcome our special guest. We have two tonight. First, we have Senator Jason Pizzo, who was elected to the Senate in 2018. He's a former Assistant State Attorney for the Miami Dade State Attorney's Office. He's originally from New Jersey, moved to Florida in 2007, graduated from the University of Miami Law School in 2010. He represents District 38, which is the town of Golden Beach, is part of, and we welcome him to County Golden Beach. I know he'd like to say a few words.
If we were successful in bringing home the requested funding, then I would deserve a clap. You can't say that. We, in this past session, we've been characterizing the bills that have passed as good, bad, very bad, and some that were less bad. Those that are particularly applicable to Golden Beach, we were slightly encouraged and optimistic with this governor, who actually vetoed the plastic straw ban ordinance. The reason why, that is a very big deal. It speaks not only to the banning of plastic straws, but the ability for local municipalities and local governments to govern themselves. And I'm paraphrasing when I said that the governor wrote basically in his veto, which is the single one that he's done so far from this past session, in saying that local governments should control themselves, and if the locals don't like it, the locals can vote out whomever they want. But it speaks to a much bigger issue than just plastic straw bans as well. Also, Airbnb was not heard, never made it out of committee. That's another extension of being able, for local municipalities, to be able to control their own destinies. I selfishly had a very good session as far as bills were concerned. A number of the ones that we filed actually made it all the way through. And then a number of what I've considered to be socially important things also passed. The anti-Semitism bill was a very big deal. It was stuck in committee, and it was pulled out of committee in a rather extraordinary fashion, which has not been done in several years, and brought to the floor. Serendipitously, I had previously invited Rabbi Mosher Matz from Miami Beach to be the Minister of the Day on the session floor, so he was there to give everybody a blessing before that passed. It was great to see. A couple of things that didn't pass, there were a number of better Senate versions of growth management bills, of transportation issues, of election issues. The governor just received another batch of bills. He always has 15 days to act upon them, and it has to be before July 1st, otherwise it becomes automatic. But some things are going to be a little challenging and quirky. Senate Bill 7066 will call for 150-foot distance from the front door of an election place, which may be a little challenging here, if you have people outside the parking lot. Business rent tax, obviously it's not commercial in Golden Beach, but if you have businesses elsewhere, the business rent tax is lowered by 20 basis points. There was large tax savings and giveaway as it relates to both hurricane preparedness, as well as schools, and another other building products, impact windows and doors as well, which might be an incentive for those to buy. We're going right back at it in September. We're going to, the committee meets starting in September. I anticipate you guys will have the same and similar funding requests. Please be mindful that I have 15 cities in my district, and, which I, basically 97 elected officials. And what I promised everybody beforehand, when I got elected, is I'm not going to come back with framed proclamations and ask you to stand with a photo op for me. I'm going to try to bring you good legislation and good funding for what you need and what's necessary. Just recently, we've, you've probably noticed that we've had a sargassum seaweed invasion on the coast, as well as in the inland canals. We've been right on the horn with the Department of Environmental Protection, Department of Health in getting them down here. Some of the residents in North Miami were not satisfied. The same agency in the county that's testing is also unresponsible for a number of issues. So we brought them down. We have the Florida Department of Transportation Secretary will be coming down for an entire workshop session, and we're going to do some breakout charrettes prior to the large meeting with the public, where we're going to invite elected officials to be able to come to meet one-on-one with the secretary. Obviously, the arteries that we have here in this section of Dade are critical and crucial, and there's a lot of wiggle room. There also is some wiggle room to speak of, that I can speak with the town manager in short order when we get a more definitive statement as it relates to emergency management plans and other funding that's available. The new Department of Emergency Management is, Secretary Director is Jared Moskowitz, who's very familiar with this, with this industry. I think he actually does the tree clearing profession. But I'm happy to answer any questions. From a social perspective, there were some good and some bad, and from a management perspective, as far as growth and business, it was very good and very, very helpful to businesses. I wouldn't go so far as to call it corporate welfare, but it was very business-friendly. In education, we, at the midnight hour, cut a deal where we're basically keeping all of the referendum money that you may or may not have voted for in the last election for traditional public schools. Any subsequent referendum that may find itself on the ballot would be proportionally shared. And one selfish thing that chief might appreciate, I filed a bill as it relates to DNA, where before you might have the victim of a sexual battery, or murder, what have you. I was a former homicide prosecutor. You were only able to get a warrant for a sample, and now you can actually use that CODIS match from the FBI index, whether it's a home invasion, a sexual battery, or what have you, for an arrest, which is a very, very big deal, and we're very proud of it. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I have my compadre and then colleague here, Representative Geller.
Senator, I want to thank you for all the help that, you know, you provide for Golden Beach, and also at the same time congratulate you, because I know you've got a lot accomplished, especially for your first term, which is very, very impressive. So we're honored to have you represent us.
Thank you.
And appreciate anything you do for us, as always.
Absolutely. I want to just be very candid. We did very well for 11 of the 15 cities I represent. So you guys were left out this year, quite frankly, so I expect that you guys move to the front of the line. But we had cities like Miami Shores, who haven't gotten a dollar in 15 years. North Bay Village, who hasn't gotten a dollar in seven years. So we were able to bring them some necessary traffic calming and things like that. I will tell you that the big push is on the environmental side, which I'm very pleased to see our governor is on board with, whether it's the coasts, or inland waters, waterways, and lakes, and what have you, rivers. To that extent, not only is it the seaweed invasion, but other red tide and environmental issues. And really, I'm truly pushing to try to get, in all candor, the county commission has been very difficult in providing a lot of resistance and headwinds to our ability to convert septic to sewer, to redo, and to honor the consent decrees from the federal government from 2013 to rip up, repair, and replace very aged sewer systems that we have here. So even the nicest $3,000 per square foot product, the Sunny Isles is flushing their toilets into very old aged pipe systems that we need to replace, and that's really where we need to be.
No, and we're very cognizant, and it's a concern of ours, both the red tide and the situation that's going on with our waterways. So we appreciate it.
Could you elaborate just a little bit more on the seaweed? Because over the past six months, it just comes up with almost everyone. What are we doing? And I explained it's a much bigger issue than anything.
It is. And, you know, traditionally, I got an education on this, as I've done a number of topics I didn't know anything about before, but the sargasso sea was, you know, navigated by the Portuguese, and a healthy amount of sargassum seaweed is necessary for mahi-mahi and other fish populations. But when you have such an invasion such as this, which is being contributed almost to the same factors of red tide, but sargassum is very special and unique in the sense that it doesn't originate from the ocean floor. It is all topical and can, and with high seawater temperatures, can replicate and duplicate with great ferocity, and almost at a frantic pace. The concern is that the bunching and grouping of all this emits hydrogen sulfide, which we've even reached out to dermatologists locally from Bay Harbor and from the city of Miami to show that the skin reactions and the respiratory issues are of legitimate concern. So Maggie, my chief of staff here, who I always have to give a shout out to, because she was a 15-year veteran prosecutor, took a 65% pay cut to come to Tallahassee to make sure I didn't get in trouble. But Maggie was on the phone today with the epidemiologist from the Department of Health. While everyone's sort of trying to do things locally and pointing fingers between city and county, we're just skipping to the head of the line, enjoying the perks and privileges of being able to have a phone call answered with the question that we had.
So what's the cause of the addition of seaweed?
It's really, it's, you know, whether you want to call it climate change, or what have you, it's everything from, it's warmer waters. Even in my native state of New Jersey, as you mentioned at the opening, we're seeing strange amoebas, only like higher water amounts of flesh-eating bacteria. It's just going to continue to be an issue. I will tell you that it is completely impractical. It's not a spigot that we can turn off. It's not like a raw sewage that we've seen from failing pumps. This is coming from areas that are far outside of our realm. So we may be getting things from Brazil coming up in the Gulf Stream. The Mississippi River kicks off stuff that creates red tide and seaweed as well, that the Gulf has to deal with. So it's not something we're going to be able to turn off, but it's something we definitely have to try to evade, whether it's for tourism, whether it's for the residents, and whether it's for the health and safety of our constituents. I know that One Bell Harbor is trying, a method of trying to net out from the southern tip of the jetty, to try to prevent the seaweed from coming. I mean, we all had it as kids. I remember early summers as a child in Cocoa Beach, when the tractor would come and sort of just pull everything aside in the morning. The issue here is it's not just taking the topical off the sand, it's the stuff that's remaining along the shoreline. And it's, we're not able to, you know, to deal with it that way. So there is a program in Sweden where they're able to actually eat the stuff. There's bacterias being developed in Japan where they're trying to deal with it, but our biggest concern is, we want the epidemiologists really to do, to show empirical data as it relates to the health, because I fall into the same camp of being a little skeptical about, about the county being responsible for this. It's just the truth. It's my position on that. And I know, Mayor, believe you belong to the coastal pact.
Yes.
With the rest of the mayors as well. Commissioner Higgins, along with Mayor Jimenez, just sent a letter to Governor DeSantis this morning, that we also forwarded to the DEP, the Department of Health, to put them on notice, that we're actually going to be asking for what's called a seasonal permit. You actually have to get individual permits to go, try to go do some daily, or perhaps 48-hour kind of exercise to remove or do something with the seaweed. We're actually going to be asking for a seasonal permit, which should give us all the way through October to be able to do whatever it is we're going to do.
No, we sent a letter to the governor concerning, because it is a concern of ours.
Mayor, I'd like to just, two quick things. You know, the senator is a freshman senator, and I got to tell you, when we first met with him, Senator knew a lot about our community. You could tell that he studied our residents, he studied our budget, he knew about Golden Beach. You don't see that from a lot of freshman senators. They kind of try to learn as they go along. He was ready to hit the ground running on day one. Maggie, phenomenal, chief of staff. I've never had a chief of staff give me their personal cellphone number at the first meeting, and not only did she give me her personal cellphone number, she made sure that I knew how to get ahold of her, her private email as well.
It was the wrong number.
It was a 900. But if I may, I'm going to pass up my card if it has a cell number on the back.
But I can tell you that both the senator and his staff are very well aware of Golden Beach's issues, and they were helpful with our legislative agenda. Senator, one thing that you may not know about Golden Beach, we are...
90 years old this year.
Not only are we 90 years old, but we are one of the very few barrier island communities that, to this day, still, because of the lack of commitment from the county, requiring homes to put in septic tanks, even though we have a complete sewer system in the community. Because of the capacity of the sewer system being at capacity, DERM does not allow our new homes to connect. So we have new $12 million homes being asked to put in a septic system or retaining tank, similar to a septic system, until capacity comes onboard. We have been fighting with both DERM and Wassa for the last seven years, trying to educate them that when you take a home offline, and you bring one back online, the allocation that was there for the prior home should still remain there for the, for the new home that comes onboard.
So there's roughly 92,000, I think it was 165, homes and businesses in Miami Dade County that are still on septic. And while you may get sticker shock looking at the number of a $3.3 billion price tag to convert from septic to sewer, when you take into account the nearly $400 billion in assessed value, and the property taxes kicks off, it becomes a rather de minimis number. It is absolutely unacceptable in 2019, with the high water table we have. Whether you believe like my brother at the end of an ice age, or you believe like my sister that we have climate, real climate change caused by humanity, it's still just not acceptable that the high water table in some places like Miami Shores and Biscayne Park are rising within six inches of the drainage field. It's really, really detrimental, obviously, to the aquifers, and it's just unacceptable.
To that point.
We have to pass, if I may, if we have to pass, if I have to file a bill that basically says that we don't allow municipalities to, you know, install new homes or new construction with a commercial residential, within X numbers of inches or feet of a high water table, high water table mark, as delineated by such and such an agency, then I'll do it. It just, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, to that point, it's refreshing to hear someone at the state level understand the local issues that we're suffering through, and so any leadership that you can provide the county in terms of getting permits expedited or allowing capacity to be created, we would really appreciate it, so thank you for that.
Thank you for coming. I really appreciate that. Also this evening, we have Representative Joe Geller, who was originally elected to the Florida House Representative in 2014. He was elected the chairman of Miami Dade County Democratic Party in 1989, playing a prominent role as an attorney for the Al Gore presidential campaign. He won the mayor's seat in North Bay Village in 2004. He represents District 100, which is the town of Golden Beach, which we are a part of. We're happy once again to have Mr. Geller represent us and here this evening.
And thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager, Chief, Clerk. I guess, yeah? Okay. And happy 90th birthday. I haven't been here since, so congratulations. Nice to see so many familiar faces up on the dais, frankly. Let me say a couple of things. First of all, I come to you having returned just recently from accompanying the governor and state delegation on the trade mission to Israel. That was fascinating. It was not a junket. We took a day to get there and a day back, and we were on the ground four days, which was packed with meetings. It was really, I thought, very productive, the state of Israel and the state of Florida have a very good relationship. There's a longtime accelerator between the Israeli Space Agency and Space Florida. There's another accelerator on the West Coast. These are agencies that, and entities that work to bring high-tech business from Israel to do business here in Florida, creating good-paying jobs here in Florida. It's good for Florida, it's good for Israel. I don't agree with this governor on everything. We have some areas of disagreement, such as vouchers for private schools. But when he's right, I'm going to stand up and say that he's right. I don't look at the source, I look at the idea. And he's done some good things on the environment, but he certainly, when he says he's going to be the most pro-Israel governor in the country, those are welcome words, and he did something about it. And this was a good trip. A lot of academic institutions from Florida, I think 10 or 12 maybe, signed a lot of memorandums of understanding, memorandum of understanding, with Israeli universities, maybe half a dozen. And that's really very good. The research is important. The trip was great. The anti-Semitism bill was signed over there, so that's very important. I want to talk head-on, as I had an opportunity to talk about with the manager and with the mayor, about the funding issue. And let me just say that I know there is, and it would be untrue to say there's not a perception in Tallahassee about really a couple of my cities, you know, about Golden Beach and about Bell Harbor, about the fact that, you know, rich people live in those cities. But we tried very hard to push back at that this year, both Senator Pizzo and myself, particularly with the major funding request that the city had, which is the Emergency Operations Center. Yes, they look at how many residents. Golden Beach is not a large community. But I think what they failed to appreciate despite our efforts is that this is a regional Emergency Operations Center. I mean, when you count the number of people that live just in coastal, Hallendale, and Hollywood, and Sunny Isles Beach, and down the coast further to Bay Harbor, Bell Harbor, and Surfside, it's a lot. And we weren't able to convince them of that this year. But I think there are some strategies that we talked about that we can employ next time. I know, Chief, that you and your colleagues were very supportive. But what we've talked about is going back to the people, and this will be the second year of this cycle. It's the second year, we have a speaker right here from Dade County. It's only the third time in history that ever happened. Before him was Marco Rubio, and before that, my old friend, who's still around, Dick Pettigrew, back a long time ago in the 70s. And he's a great man, and he's happily still with us. We have a speaker from Dade County. We need to, in fact, I understand that just today, a couple of speakers down the road, they chose another Dade County representative, Danny Fernandez, is going to be the next speaker in line. So that's important, I'm sorry, Danny Perez, I'm thinking of my friend Rep. Fernandez, who just got on it. Representative Danny Perez is going to be next in line to be speaker beyond the two they've got now. And having Rep. Perez there in that leadership thing is something that also should help Dade County, and those of us who've gotten to know Rep. Perez know that he's a good guy and a smart guy, and I think we have a lot to see coming from him. The trick to it is going to be this. We need, and the senator and I are happy to organize this meeting, we need a meeting not just of chiefs, because sometimes sadly, the chiefs are not heard in the way they ought to be chief. I know that's not the case here, but in some of these other communities, they, they back them up, but they don't do what they need to do. We want to get at least the emergency managers, and if we can get the managers or assistant managers together, we want to see, if we can arrange to get them onboard actively. We need the lobbyists from those cities to also go to the legislature and say, this is not just a project for 1,500 people. This is not just a project for the city of Golden, the town of Golden Beach. This is a project that is going to benefit all of us here in these barrier islands from, basically, from the Dania Cut Off Canal down into the middle of Miami Beach. This is something that we all need. I think we can do that. I think that's a possibility, and when those communities speak with one voice for this project, I think we can reverse the perception problem we had in this session, and we can get that done. And we're absolutely committed to doing our level best to make sure that happens. So we did have some luck for some of these others, although I'll tell you that in my case, basically every city, no matter whether they had three, four, or five requests, the ones who did get funded only got one. It's, it's an issue. It was a tight budget year. We'll see what the governor does with the budget. Some things that happened, very briefly here, are not good. I personally think that arming teachers in classrooms is just a terrible idea. I think that's something that's going to ultimately result in loss of life. We passed a good bill the previous year. I was one of 10 Democrats who voted for that Marjory Stoneman Douglas Safety Bill. It was an achievement. The attempts to roll it back, I think, were not well taken. We passed a kind of stupid bill on federal immigration enforcement that said, we won't have sanctuary cities in Florida. Well, we don't have any sanctuary cities in Florida. But the attempt to impose those costs on local government and on the state of Florida, when they should be born nationally, is just wrong. And we talked about, there were some Home Rule things, although one of them the governor fixed, as the senator points out. He actually vetoed that plastic straw bill. That's a blow in favor of Home Rule. For the governor to say the same thing that we've said on the floor, I've reminded my colleagues repeatedly, they don't get any smarter when they walk in that building. They are no wiser than local government officials. They're elected by the same constituents that elect you, that elect county commissions, that elect school boards. They don't have some monopoly on figuring out how things work. It's just not the case. Depending on your point of view, a mixed blessing. A bill finally passed that will allow firefighters to get help when they get cancer, as so many of them do. I know that some in local government thought that that's an unfunded mandate, and perhaps those costs ought to be coming more from the state, but the fact of the matter is, firefighters protect all of us, and they have been shown to be getting sick at an alarming rate. I supported that bill. It's a rare occasion that I don't completely agree with the League of Cities, which made me a Home Rule defender again this year, but on that one, I think that was the right thing to do for our first responders. They all risked their lives as they were police officers, and we have to protect them. And then they abolished the Miami Dade Expressway Authority. They're going to have a greater Miami Expressway Authority. I'm not sure how much that's really going to be a difference other than name, but there was a big push. Supposedly, there were going to be some rebates for that. But some very good things happened. One of them that may not sound like it's so important to you, but I thought it was. We passed a bill for incarcerated women. And there are some terrible tragedies that take place already, but among the things that just make it so much harder, women in incarceration, both at the state prison level and at county jails, simply did not have access to feminine hygiene products. That's disgraceful. In the 21st century, just disgraceful. That bill finally passed, along with some bills that are going to fight human trafficking, a terrible scourge that we all need to stand together to fight. Miami Dade Needle Exchange Program, that has been a pilot program to reduce disease, is now going to be going statewide, and I think that's important. So, you know, there's, there's a range of things we can talk about. As I said, I'm not a supporter of taking public funds and using them for private schools. I just don't think that's the right approach. On the other hand, I was happy to support increased security at all schools, including private schools, religious schools, parochial schools, all of those. The children need to be kept safe, and it is one of our primary responsibilities as a government, to keep our children safe. So I was pleased to support that. Maybe it provides a little relief for people, but more importantly, it provides peace of mind. We're here to try and help. We're here to address issues. My legislative aide, Joel Ramos, is here. We're accessible to you anytime. I think those of you who've worked with me know that if you need me, you can call me literally at any hour. If there's an emergency and we need to get some help, as was the case after the last hurricane for Sunny Isles, when they needed somebody to reach out to FPL and make sure that a public issue, a downed line, was endangering not only everybody who lived there, probably her residents as well, coming south. And we're happy to do that at any time. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It was a little bit of a tough session. Wasn't an easy one at all, but we're there to represent the voice, not only of those of you who sit on the dais, but all of your citizens. If you have something from one of your citizens, whether it's through you, through the manager, through the attorney, the clerk, we're happy to help in any way we can, and I'll be happy to answer.
Representative Geller, thank you. We appreciate what you do. We know you work hard for our community. We've got a few years, and we've been a long time, and my hat's off to you, because it's a tough job. So thank you, and we appreciate you coming also.
Mayor, just to piggyback for that, like, I think that this session, I think, was a tough session for a lot of cities, and the budget was what it was, and the governor tried to do what he needed to do. But both the senator and the representative fought hard. They literally were a voice in Tallahassee. Dave Kucera, our lobbyist, speaks very highly of the efforts that they, that they put together.
As we do with him, by the way.
And we cannot thank them, you know, enough for what they've done. We know that it's a, it's a scam game. You know, some years we're lucky, some years we're not. This year was not our year, but we know that moving forward, hopefully things get better. Representative Geller failed to recognize a very special someone in the audience, an aspiring actress, his 12-year-old daughter, who's joining us tonight. I don't, I don't remember your first name.
Michelle.
Michelle. So Michelle, welcome to the town of Golden Beach. Mayor, if it's okay with both the senator and the representative, like, get a picture for our newsletter.
Sure.
Yeah, there's one, there's one bill that made me fail the Florida Chamber of Commerce scorecard this session. I was one of the only people to vote against SB 1000. That allows communications companies just to come in and cut into your swale and put 5G lines wherever they want, wherever they want. And I vehemently opposed that. They listed Aventura, Miami Beach, and Sunny Isles as being an issue, and I voted no three times in a row. People thought it was nuts, because they write out big checks for campaigns, but it was the right thing to do, because you're willing to work and co-locate, and that was a big...
I remember seeing her when she was like this big.
I do remember that.
It's amazing. We can just go around the side, up on the dais, probably.
It was in the Red Sox house.
Exactly. Exactly.
Come on up here.
Yeah, come up here. Who's the six behind me?
This is going to be great.
My civic center.
Come on over, if you need to.
It's a shirky joke.
One, two, oh no. Hold on.
One, two, three.
Can we get one with the town manager? Alex, just get one.
First, Jaime. He came up to Tallahassee.
One, two.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your time.
Use the number on the back.
Use the number on the back of the card.
Thank you, guys.
We need it.
People don't remember it, but Representative Geller used to be the town attorney. Only Councilman Einstein remembers. Long time ago.
He stays so long? That's the part where it's.
Twenty-eight. And so have kids with you.
Catch you if you can. Let me answer your question.
Yeah.
I'll say it. Israel.
Right?
Nice to see you again. Thank you.
Sir. Thank you, sir. The same here.
Chief, nobody filled out. Of course, nobody filled out. They don't want for, nobody here.
You want it?
Yes, please. All right. Thank you so much.
Krylin?
Krylin.
Krylin. Then he was like, like.
Krylin went to jail.
He was like Ozzy and Harriet.
Motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal items from the consent agenda and changes to the agenda. I have none. Counselors, none, staff?
Yes, there's item number three, or sorry, item number four. Resolution 2619 dot nineteen. There's a substitute item on the dais that we filled in the blanks for the council.
Okay. With that, move to Good and Welfare?
We have nothing for Good and Welfare.
Okay, mayor's report. Real quick, keep it short and brief. Just a little update. Town manager and I have been working on consistently and nonstop the proposed new town hall. Appreciate all the council comments. Those are now being, those were all submitted into our package, which the attorney has and should have that by the August meeting. Also, the town manager and I have been meeting with several financial institutions, looking at some financing options. And we should give you an update on that also in the August-September meeting. We're working on also keeping the town looking clean and great. This evening, we've got a proposal to resurfacing Golden Beach Drive and also repaving Golden Beach Drive and resurfacing. And also on north of the parkways and the islands, we're going to coat that. So the town, this should give the town a really nice, fresh look. Two other quick comments. One is the summer's here. I know the town administration has a bunch planned for not only the residents, but also the children of Golden Beach. I urge all the residents and the kids to look at our website and look at our newsletter and see what activities are being offered during the summer. Hurricane season is here. Can't urge you enough to get your residents prepared, trimming your trees, getting supplies. If you have a boat, come up with a plan to move your boat or to secure your boat. Because it's hard to come up at the eleventh hour to secure your boat. And believe me, you want to have a plan and some options available to you. My condolences go out to the Mandell family. Jaime lost his grandfather and my thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family. That's all I got. Moving right along, move to town council, vice mayor.
No comments except thoughts and prayers.
Okay. Councilman Einstein, thank you.
Same thing. Again, our condolences to the Mandell family. They have their, I guess, their grandfather, quickly.
Thank you. Councilman Luskin?
Same sentiments to the Mandell family. I just want you to know that the town has really been looking clean, taking very well care of the town. And I know that's a constant, everyday type of thing to have to continue with, so thank you for that and I hope everyone enjoys their summer.
Thank you. Moving right along, town manager report?
About seven pages of report. It'll probably take about twenty minutes, but I'll hold it for the obviously.
No report?
No report.
Nothing for me.
Town attorney, nothing?
No.
Ordinance is second reading. There are none. Ordinance is first reading. First one is an ordinance of town council amending the town code to revise the rooftop activities.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida amending the town's code of ordinances to revise chapter sixty-six zoning by amending section sixty-six dash two-six-one rooftop activities, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Mayor, just want to thank our attorney, Steve Hoffman, who put together this ordinance in such an expedited manner. As you know, this resolves the issue of the variance that we issued at the last meeting. It basically sets rules, fertilizes losses related to the rooftop activities.
Is that just for zone one?
Zone one.
Any comments, questions?
I just, there, anyone who lives on zone one, which is the ocean, correct?
Correct.
No music at all on the roof?
That's how the code currently reads.
That is how the code.
That is. That's not a new item.
No, I know, but we're confirming that?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you could have a portable radio up there.
Okay.
So long as the decibels don't exceed our, we can't regulate.
Okay.
But you can't pipe it up there. And that's how our code currently reads.
That's all.
No council comments, public comments? No public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to N, quasi-educational resolution. There are none. Item number N, consent agenda. There are two items. Item number N two, an official meeting minutes of the May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen regular town council meeting. Item N three, a resolution of town council approving a mutual aid agreement between the town and Miami-Dade Island Chiefs Oval Force. Those two items on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Item number consent two and three passes unanimously. Item number four, a resolution, a town resolution, item number O four. A resolution of town council approving a proposal from, I just lost it, sorry.
Arrow Asphalt.
Arrow Asphalt Inc. for milling and resurfacing town of Golden Beach Drive.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving a proposal from Arrow Asphalt and Engineering Inc. for milling and resurfacing of Golden Beach Drive pursuant to section two dash two-seven-five subsection three of the town's code of ordinances, providing for implementation, providing for authorization, and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Any second.
Mayor, let me just, a couple of quick things because you asked me to stay at lunch and I think it's always helpful for the public to know and for the council to know. You know, when we bring these items that we waive competitive bidding, but we still bring you proposals. So the mayor asks, well, why do we do this? Couple of things. Our rule for purchasing is very, very restrictive. We have probably one of the lowest thresholds in terms of what we can buy without going out to solicitation. And it's far less than what the state requires. Typically, the state is for anything over a million dollars is when you're required to go out for some actual solicitation process. And it's typically for reconstruction. Because your code only allows me to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, everything outside of that, I have to go out to bid. Through a formal bid process, where we have to get big documents, put together a scope, put together services, advertise it in a newspaper, get the attorneys involved to draft contracts. And so now that hundred thousand dollar purchase becomes a hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase because advertising alone in the Miami Herald or in the Business Journal costs about ten thousand dollars. So what we've done through the years is we've tried to honor the spirit of solicitation by going out and getting proposals, not bids from companies. The difference is when you put out a bid, the world knows that you're asking for proposals and everyone can submit. When you ask for proposals, you select a couple of companies and you say, give me a price, and then we try to negotiate. So that's why we waive competitive bidding, but I don't want the community to think that we do not get proposals. And in fact, for this item, as you saw today, we actually got five proposals. Not just the three that I had mentioned earlier. We actually got an additional two over the weekend. So we do go out for a solicitation process. We just don't follow your bid requirements because it's very cumbersome. And we can address that as a future date on how we can give us more authority. So you're not constantly waiving competitive bidding because that looks difficult. The other thing is we were talking about maybe having a discussion as to what we were going to do at this meeting. And the mayor and I had a very strong conversation and I spoke to somebody about what we're going to do. So let me explain to you exactly what we're doing. On Golden Beach Drive from the South Gate to the North Gate, we're going to actually mill one inch of asphalt. We're not going to keep any of the old asphalt like we were originally intending. We're going to mill one inch of asphalt. We're going to put tack coat down and then we're going to put one inch of new asphalt on that tack coat. On the wings, so any of the side streets, the parkways, or the islands, there will be no milling. With the exception of the milling that already occurred on Center Island that was paid for by the developers of the houses on Center Island. The rest of the, the rest of the streets are going to get a seal coat so that it matches the top coat of the asphalt on Golden Beach Drive. When we, when we did Golden Beach Drive originally, we had the new asphalt and then the side streets were still looking very old because they didn't get the asphalt. This time, we're going to seal coat it in tangent with the asphalt. So it's a, you're approving two contracts today. One for the milling and resurfacing of Golden Beach Drive and two for the seal coating of the peripheral streets along Golden Beach, in Golden Beach for an additional contract. I'm asking for spending authority of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for milling and forty thousand dollars, sorry. I'm asking for authority for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for milling and resurfacing and forty thousand dollars for seal coating. You may see why we already have proposals. I want to make sure that the proposals that we have are exactly what we want to do, so I need some wiggle room in there. The proposal that you got is for a hundred and twenty, sorry, a hundred and forty thousand. That gives me twenty thousand dollar wiggle room as it relates to the milling and resurfacing underneath my twenty-five thousand dollar authority. Even though that's not the way the rules work, but still, kind of just to give you a little bit of confidence. And the seal coating came in at about twenty, excuse me, I have these numbers memorized. We literally just got them today. The seal coating came in at twenty-seven and I'm asking for authority of forty, just in case there's a little bit of, we may ask for a stronger seal. We may ask for two coats. So it gives me some more authority. Since this is happening while you are out of recess, we're going to be negotiating the contracts and hopefully it works sometime in mid to late August. We want to make sure that I have some flexibility in terms of how we can get this done. You do have money in your budget set aside for projects that are not enumerated in your capital, in your capital budget. There's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the budget that you set aside. This is where that money's coming from.
So the asphalt on Golden Beach Drive, they have to coat up, it's the only thing.
No, no. So asphalt doesn't get a seal coat because it already comes in at the prime color. It's already at the.
But they'll look the same.
They'll look the same. That's correct. That's the goal. The goal is to make them both look the same. And to answer your question, yes, the seal coat will fade faster than the asphalt will.
Nobody asked.
Thank you.
You know, I know we've gone astray at number of times. Are we doing anything with the strand?
It'll get the seal coat as well.
On the strand.
Yeah, so the whole town will.
Yeah.
How long does it take?
Well, well, we're going to probably, and this is.
Sections at a time?
Fair warning to our residents and fair warning to the police heads up. We're probably going to do this the same way we did it when we first did the CIP, which is very inconvenient for everyone. I find it to be a better product when you do both lanes at the same time and the same period. Because you don't get that center seam that you see everywhere else in South Florida. So what I like to do is I like to close sections of town and force our residents to park their cars outside of those sections for twenty-four hours and they have to walk home. We just did it on Center Island. It was a pain to deal with because the police had to really work hard, but I think you get a better product. It also allows the curing process of the asphalt to cure better. It becomes less coarse and more fine when you don't drive on it for twenty-four hours. So residents, fair warning, we will be closing sections of town at a time where you won't be able to drive home. We always ask you to leave your car outside of that area. You have to walk to and from your house. That's why we have a beautiful three million dollar sidewalk.
The only suggestion I have is there's several homes on Golden Beach under construction. So we need to notify those construction sites that from here to here, no construction trucks will be allowed.
When we did Center Island, Mayor, we had the same scenario and the house that was under construction, actually, we made them close for twenty-four hours. So that there was no risk of an employee trying to get in. We actually closed that site for twenty-four hours.
Right. Why did we decide not to do the parkways?
It's very cost prohibitive for us to do all.
They don't need it.
So we, so believe it or not, we have the same number of square yards and or square feet of asphalt in the side streets, the parkways, and the islands as we do the entire length of Golden Beach Drive. It's eleven thousand six hundred square yards, one hundred and sixteen thousand square feet of asphalt. So it would be double the budget and we just don't have double the budget.
We don't need it.
And they don't have the patch, they look the patchy.
And, 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 and. And as, and as Councilman Luskin just said to the, my sir, we don't have as many patches, nor do we have as much settlement because there's less activity on the side streets. The only parkway that will have new asphalt is the cul-de-sac area of North Parkway. And again, that's because the developers of the homes in that area have had to pay for it. It was a condition of their certificate of occupancy that they replaced the curbing gutter and the asphalt in the North Parkway cul-de-sac.
Alex, just to address one other issue we discussed, is that everyone was notified.
Yes.
That they cannot do cuts in the streets.
So, so the town, so the town clerk is sending certified letters to all the utilities. TECO Gas, AT&amp;T, Atlantic Broadband, North Miami Beach, and Miami-Dade Water and Sewer, and any other utility that may have a vested interest in doing work in Golden Beach. After we mill and resurface Golden Beach Drive, we're going to have a two-year moratorium on cutting, drilling, or exploring into our asphalt. It's what we did after the CIP. So for two years, you won't be able to cut onto Golden Beach Drive. We're also sending a letter to every homeowner on Golden Beach Drive, especially those that don't have gas today. Because that's typically why we see the cuts, is for people who want gas. So if you don't have gas or you don't have Atlantic Broadband or if you don't have something else, we're going to ask you that this is a time for you to put an empty raceway. What is an empty, empty raceway? An empty raceway is basically an empty pipe, a three-inch pipe, that a utility can later pull their stuff through it. So that if you in the future want to have gas, or if you in the future want to have Atlantic Broadband and you currently don't have it, the onus is on you to put in that infrastructure today, while we're going to allow you to tear up our road. Because after we asphalt, there will be no cutting into the road. The only way that you can go into the road is by doing a directional bore across the street. Yes, directional boards are easy, but directional boards are also very expensive. And so that's why most people find it easier just to do a saw cut and dig a trench. We're going to have a two-year moratorium on trenching Golden Beach Drive.
So if a water company says we got an emergency, we got to dig up.
There's a, there's a difference between having a main rupture and then they're required to put in one thousand feet. Sorry, I misspoke. They're required to put a hundred feet in each direction, so two hundred square feet.
Still look bad.
It's still a patch, but it's a greater patch versus somebody who doesn't.
Well, blew it off in one of them. I know. I hope they got it all right.
The, the stuff that you see now in the street.
Four hundred gallons.
The stuff that you see now in the street isn't, wasn't a break. It was, it was lack of service lines to the new homes that were being put on the east side of the street. So that's why they have those three holes there. Because the main, they needed to tap into the main. So what we're asking is for any houses, and even if a house seems to be, looks like a tear me down, we're going to ask those houses to put in the raceways. Because if in two years you're going to knock it down, then you're going to need to do a new connection. All of our older, all of our older homes have a smaller service line to the homes. This is a time to upgrade your service line.
Any other count?
So when is the anticipated ground breaking?
So the mayor, the mayor council had asked that we try to get this done before the holidays. We're going to time it so that we can get the letters out, make sure that we have enough response time.
Holidays, you mean which holidays?
Typically for Thanksgiving, Christmas. We're hoping that we'll probably get it done by October, but our absolute deadline is November. And we're not going to rush it because we really want to make sure that we get the conduits in. But we've been working already behind the scenes to try to get this job done. We also feel that our residents, you know, would like to see Golden Beach Drive sprucing up a little bit before the holidays.
I've had residents comment already about the patchwork.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't look good. And even when they do a big patch, so when they do a hundred-foot patch, it still looks like a patch and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem right.
Any other comments, council? Any public comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number O five. Resolution of town council approving a proposal for the purchase and installation of electric generator equipment.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving the proposal provided by Mills Electric Service Inc. for the purchase and installation of electrical generator equipment, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
First, Mayor, let me just say kudos to the town attorney again. I sent this item to him literally like late last week and I said, I need an item done. He did it within, what, forty minutes, if that? So thank you to Steve for that. This is a last-minute item because we applied for a grant to FEMA and FEMA awarded us that grant. So that thirty million dollar free money that we brought to Golden Beach is now going to be thirty million, sixty thousand dollars that we've brought to Golden Beach in twelve years. This is a, this is a mitigation grant. It allows us to convert our manual generators to have automatic transfer searches. So when we lose power, the generators turn on by themselves. They switch from, from FPL to the generator. It then sends a signal to the pump station. You now have power turn on and it'll turn on. If you remember after Hurricane Irma, I had to come out here and manually do the transferring. Because we, because of our response time, we ended up having waste high water in town. If the generators had been automated and the pumps were to be able to come on, you would not have had flooding in town. You would have had some flooding, but not waste high water. And the reason we had waste high water is because our pumps did not turn on. Twenty minutes after I turned on the pumps, waste high water became ankle-high water. And so this is, this was a lesson learned. The good thing is. And so this is, this was a lesson learned. The good thing is that the city was able to get $60,000 from FEMA to pay for this. We are gonna have to pay the difference of $24,000. The resolution is written in a manner that we only move forward the project once we get FEMA money.
So, so we're retaining the two generators, we're just adding transfer switch.
That's all we're doing.
And is there, is there a floater switch on there too, that will cut it on and off automatically?
So the entire system was designed by our engineers. FEMA engineers had to verify that what we proposed is acceptable to FEMA for mitigation purposes. I don't know if it's a flow switch or what kind of device it is, but there's a system that acknowledges when the power is lost, to convert from FPL power, turn on the generator. The generator then comes on. What triggers the pumps to go on? There is a float valve in the system that shows when the, when the retaining tank of the pump station is full, to turn on the pumps. I'm assuming that if we lost power, we're gonna lose capacity, and so we're gonna have flooding, so that we turn on the pumps. But you're right, there may be a scenario where the power, we lose power, but the pumps don't come on because there's not enough water on the ground to turn on the pumps, to turn them on.
Okay. The, the other thing I don't understand is at the end of the resolution here, there's a total of 193. 193. I don't know where that came from. I'm not understanding. It's the very last, next to the last page. I'm not understanding. North Park Pump Station 98, South Park 94, total 193.
Where do you see that?
In the attachment. On my iPad, right after, right after Craig A. Smith's proposal.
Oh, sorry. Those are the three. So same, same thing. We didn't go out the formal bid. We did get three proposals.
Oh, okay.
So that's the, so the three proposals, one was 84, sorry. Out of the three proposals, one was $84,500. The second one was $120,279, and the last one was $193,000. We're going with the $84,500. So of, of the three proposals, we're going with the cheapest of the three.
Right, with six together, coming from FEMA.
We're going with the least most responsibly, responsive, submitted, proposal, bidder, not bidder. Responsible.
I, I just want to ask, like, if we hired somebody, just to sit in there, to turn it on?
Couple of things.
Once a year?
Once a year. Whenever there's a hurricane.
So.
How many times we have hurricanes?
So, so a couple, so, so a couple of things, not to, not to embarrass the town staff, but we did have two staff members from Public Works assigned here during this.
And you, you were out there a lot.
Assigned here during the storm.
No, I'm here.
We also had the police department here and myself. And during a high-weather event, you're gonna wait for the winds to subside before you go out. These equipments don't care about wind, and so employee safety is always gonna, all right, that's number one. Number two, FEMA won't pay for that person. FEMA was paying for them.
And as number three, I was here for that storm, and I don't know what FEMA would be, you would find to sit out there and risk life on land for that.
Tony.
He's no longer resident of Golden Beach.
You got your generators.
Ben would do it for a night.
Well, I'll tell you what, how about that then?
Ben would do it for a night.
Motion to approve is always appropriate.
Remotely, I need a clicker.
Ben would do it for lunch. I need a clicker, you know, that turns it on.
So let's keep this going. Any other comments? No. Public comments, no? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Great job getting the money, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is discussion and direction by town manager. Council has none. Town manager's gonna give us a quick update on the civic center master plan.
Very, very, very brief. So since our last meeting, the, the design criteria is complete. The attorney now has a heat promise that will from 45 days. He'll have the bid documents. Once he has the bid documents, the mayor and I will review them, bring them for your approval at the next council meeting. In addition to that, the mayor and I have met with three different banks. We're still waiting on the fourth bank. We have to go with financing. We will not go out to bid until financing is in place, so financing now is driving the timeline. Financing now will drive the timeline. Once we have financing in place, then by, we meet all the criteria to go out to a formal bid. And as you know, we'll go out for a design build bid with our maximum GMP of $5.2 million. Not 5.5, 5.2. Also, with that said, just to remind the community that we are in recess for the month of July, and remind the council that your next scheduled regular town council meeting is August 19.
August 19th?
August 20th.
Wait, let's scroll over that date real quick.
August 20th at 7:00 PM.
When is Labor Day?
The first is September.
Oh, okay.
September 2nd.
7:00 PM.
September 2nd.
September 7th.
Monday, September 2nd.
There's a good chance I will be out of town on Labor Day.
Yeah.
But.
That's okay, we're having a meeting.
It's the 20th.